In order, thank you all for being here this evening. And we'll start out with our invocations we typically do. Commissioner Johnson?
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for letting us be here this evening. Please be with everyone in this country and also fire safety, medical, the armed services, everyone that lives to protect us every day in and day out. Lord, be with them as they put themselves in harm's way for the protection of us, Lord. Be with this board tonight as we meet to do the people's work. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Join us for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now move to our employee recognition. With five years of service, Stephanie Ramirez-Nava, Elizabeth Risher, Kenneth Sossaman, Tammy Goodson, and Michelle Young. With 10 years of service, Wyatt McBride, Vivian Garcia, Marty Smith, Tommy Burgess, Mary Gaddy, Terri Laney, Desiree Ramirez. With 15 years of service, Jeffrey Holshouser. With 20 years of service, April Langston, Shan Lemons, and Malcolm Murray. And with 25 years of service, Gina Haney. We certainly appreciate those folks and their contributions to this county and our citizens. So, thank you very much. And with that, I will ask that the county manager do an introduction of our new cooperative extension.
Actually, I'd like Marty Smith to please come forward to introduce our new Cooperative Extension Director.
I can't tell you all what a pleasure it is to tell you that we have a Cooperative Extension Director. We have been searching for just the right person for a very long time, and we finally found him. And he is here with me tonight. He started last Wednesday. And I'm gonna let him tell you a little bit about his background, but I'll tell you one thing that he probably won't tell you. And that is that in 2014, this year, he received the Alumni Association Excellence in Extension Programming Award from Virginia Tech. He comes to us from Virginia, so Virginia Tech was his land-grant university, and that was quite a prestigious award. So, I'll let him fill you in on his background a little bit.
All right.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. And I'd like to tell the board what a pleasure it is to be here this evening and to be in Union County to serve the citizens. I've been 27 years in service in Richmond County, Virginia. It was a tough leave, but we're working through that. And one of the things that's really helping is the good folks here that I've met so far. There have been super people to meet, and the enthusiasm and support of the program is really what brought me here. The folks are just really excited about the future of the program, and it speaks well for the support of this board and the citizens and of the community of all the walks of life. There's a lot that goes on in that office, and it's been a whirlwind kind of four days, but I've kinda lost track of how many people I've met. But I've been sitting in on meetings and trying to figure out who's who and where they're from and remembering names. So, just a brief history, I grew up in upstate New York on a dairy farm showing cows and was real active in 4H. And I went to Ohio State to school because I grew up right next to Cornell University. And taught agriculture in Ohio for six years, many different levels, and then have been agriculture agent in Virginia in the same little town for 27 years. So, do you all have any questions?
Any questions?
Just to let you know, because I have experience at both, you'll have to learn to do this right here. That's a whole lot easier than the hokey shuffle, but...
I thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
We're certainly glad to have you.
Thank you.
All right. That will take us to Domestic Violence Awareness Month Proclamation. Whereas domestic violence affects all Union County residents and far too many people suffer abuse at the hands of spouse, partner, parent, child, or sibling, these victims can be of any age, race, religion, or economic status, and the resulting damage is inflicted not only on the victims but their childrens, family, and communities. Whereas domestic violence includes not only physical but also mental and emotional abuse, financial abuse, sexual abuse, and isolation. Whereas domestic violence is widespread, including one in three Americans who have witnessed an incident of domestic violence with an annual cost to U.S. companies of $3.5 billion in lost work time, increased healthcare costs, higher turnover, and lower productivity. And whereas, according to the North Carolina Coalition Against Domestic Violence, there have been 819 women, men, and children murdered as a result of domestic violence since January 1, 2002 in North Carolina. And whereas, according to the North Carolina Council for Women, domestic violence programs across the state respond to over 114,034 crisis calls and provide services to over 57,000 victims last year. Whereas the key to prevention is education, community awareness, having zero tolerance for domestic violence, and requiring accountability by the abuser. And whereas, Union County recognizes the importance of having collaboration by mutual partners to promote social norms, policies, and laws that support gender equity and foster intimate partnerships based on mutual respect, equality, and trust. Now therefore be it resolved that the Union County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim October 2014 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all citizens to support this observance. The Union County Board of Commissioners urges our citizens to increase their awareness and education of this destructive force which deeply affects a large number of families in Union County each year and to become a part of the efforts to stop violence in families. I will make a motion that we accept this proclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. And that will take us to Public Hearing. I move that we open the public hearing on the FY 2016 Community Transportation Program Grant Application.
There is no presentation unless the board would like one.
Very good. And there's no one signed up to speak, therefore I'll move that we close the public hearing. That will take us to our informal comments. Again, no one has signed up to speak. We'll go on to number four, additions, deletions, and/or adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask that we take item number 10 under New Business, remove it from the agenda, please.
Yes, I'd like to ask that we, in the consent agenda, that we delay consideration of 4J until after the completion of the EMS committee survey. That's amending the funding sources for the Human Services Building.
All right. Any other additions, deletions? All right. All in favor of removing item number 10 under New Business?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. All in favor of removing item 4J from the consent agenda? One opposed, three, four. All right. And that will take us... Yes, sir.
Will you consider moving it to where we discuss the issue? Put it under New Business?
Are you asking to remove it from the consent?
Consent.
And place it on the regular agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll make that item number 10. All in favor of moving that item to the regular agenda? Aye opposed, none.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the consent agenda as amended?
All right. All in favor? Aye opposed, none. All right. That will take us to our Old Business. Number six, Union County 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update.
If I could ask Mr. Black to come forward? I'm sorry. Compre...
I'd rather hear Joe Lesh on transportation.
Yes.
No offense to Mr. Black.
I'm still trying to catch up. I'm still trying to catch up with you on the agenda. I'd like to introduce Joe Lesh, our transportation planner, who will introduce our consultant this evening.
Right.
You really shouldn't insult Dick that way.
Mr. Chairman, board members, we're concluding about a year and a half's worth of work in updating the comprehensive plan and developing the county's first multimodal transportation plan. And to give a brief presentation on both is Kate Pierce, here with our land design. Also, Jake Petrowski is here as well. If you have any questions after she's done or during her presentation, feel free to ask.
Thank you. It's good to be back here. This, as Joe mentioned, this is the, probably one of the final presentations you'll receive on the Union County Transportation Plan and Comprehensive Plan Update. We've met with you, we've presented a couple of times, we've had three meetings with the public, a community survey, and numerous outreach to stakeholders throughout the county. And we feel like that this plan represents a good place for both the staff members to have something that is useful for them, but also in helping set the future vision of Union County. So, with that, the process, as Joe mentioned, has been a little over a year. We're now finally into... Jake's gonna fix something? Into plan documentation. So, last week, the, or not last week, a few weeks ago, the planning board did receive the plan, both plans, presentation, both plan presentations, and approved that for your consideration tonight. This whole process has been guided by an advisory committee made up of representatives from local governments, landowners, business owners, residents of Union County. And this group has met numerous times over the course of the project to provide guidance, input on the development of both land use and transportation recommendations, and overall vetting of the recommendations that we'll present to you tonight. There are two deliverables, and these are complementary documents. They work with each other, but they are two separate deliverables, and I think they will require two separate votes from this commission. The first is the Comprehensive Plan. It's an update to your existing land use and comprehensive plan. And the second, as Joe mentioned, is a multimodal transportation plan for the county. I'm gonna spend a little bit of time talking about each, and feel free to stop me with any questions. The Comprehensive Plan not only addresses land use, but addresses an entire set of goals for the county. These include looking at utility services, looking at economic development opportunities, and ways to increase agricultural production in the county, thinking about housing options for how the county's demographics will change over time, retail, how are we gonna capture some of the retail leakage that's been happening over the past 10 years? And then also thinking about some other things, the health of county residents. What can we do in this planning process to help improve county residents' health, looking at your natural and cultural resources? And then, one of the most important ones is kind of the intergovernmental cooperation. So while the whole Comprehensive Plan deals with all of these factors, and there are recommendations on each of these things, I did wanna spend most of this time tonight on the land use plan, since that really is the tool that the county will use to help guide growth and development over the next 20 years. This is something you're very familiar with. I wanted to spend a little time just talking about how this is a useful tool for planning staff in the county and for helping this county grow in a way that reflects the priorities of the residents here. Basically, what we're looking at is it provides a little more flexibility compared to your previous plan. It really acknowledges that in order for Union County to grow, we need to balance, provide opportunities to balance the tax base, which really means attracting more non-residential development to this county. That's in order to accommodate and attract more jobs. We know that the majority of jobs that will be attracted in the county over the next 20 years are those that are in the retail and service industry, but because you have such a strong core of manufacturing around the airport, what are some things that this plan can recommend to attract more businesses that wanna take advantage of that location? What are some more things that this plan can recommend to think about, different areas in the county to attract jobs so that more people are living and working in Union County and not making the commute back to other places? One of those ways we did that is through identifying potential employment centers. This varies from existing employment centers, like those around the airport, planned employment centers, like what's going to happen around the Duke readiness site, and potential employment centers that are either existing today or need to be redeveloped over time. And on the map here below, you see all the blue dots are what we've identified as priority employment centers, and then we recognize that the corridors, the main roads in and out of the county are also prime locations for warehousing and logistics because they aren't resource-intensive. We also know that through our analysis, we're losing a lot of money across the border to Mecklenburg in terms of retail. If we projected the number of households growth and combined that with the amount of money you're kind of currently losing, the amount of retail we could capture in the county is tremendous. If we think about just grocery stores, it's around a million square footage of grocery stores, which equals about 22 Harris Teeters. So what we've done is think about all that retail, realizing that a lot of that will probably be captured in the towns jurisdictions, but where are the opportunities within the county to capture some of that retail within the county's jurisdiction? And we identified a whole variety of commercial centers that range from small rural centers to large community centers. And we not only located these places in the land use concept, but also developed these footprints that potential developers could come in and say, yes, the county is forward thinking about what their future retail pattern could look like, and this is a potential site that could be developed. So these illustrations are helpful for a couple of reasons. One, they show that you're preparing to be able to accommodate this kind of development. And two, they're also helpful in illustrating how this county should grow. So we're not talking about, you know, high rises that impede on the character that we love about Union, but we're talking about things that are complementary to existing neighborhoods, that respect existing neighborhoods, but do grow in a way that provides some more of the tax base that this county needs. I was really excited to hear that the new, oh, I guess he left, but Cooperative Extension Director's on board. Hopefully, he can use this plan. There's a lot of great information about your agricultural economy. This plan does take a lot of time and effort in saying, what can we do to actually add to that economy? Where are some opportunities for value-add processing facilities? And what are some of those recommendations and funding mechanisms that could support some of that growth? A lot of what we did was based on two things. One, market realities, and two, the existence of water and sewer today and planned utilities. So, all of our decisions go back to either, is there a market justification for one of our recommendations, and how does that work with the utility systems that are planned for this area? So, if you see on the sewer service area map, all of the area in gray is an area that will most likely not be served by sewer in the long term. And that's the area that we think is probably most realistic in terms of preserving and conserving for agricultural production. So each of the decisions we've made on this land use map are driven by either a utility, transportation, or market function. So, on that note, we know that Union County is going to continue to be a location of choice for families and individuals looking to move here. You're expecting around 88% new housing over the next 30 years. And so, all we're saying is, yes, you're gonna still be a top destination for families, but as demographic trends change, more people are retiring and the millennials, the two largest generations that are going to drive housing demand are wanting a different product than what you currently have today. So, this land use plan does a good job of just identifying the appropriate areas for where that product could go. It's not saying that single family's not going to be your dominating housing option. It is still going to do that, but you need to accommodate different types of housing to appeal to these two generations, which will be the majority of people seeking to purchase homes over the next 30 years. All of these recommendations sound great, but where the rubber meets the road is in the recommendations section. So the recommendations section has specific recommendations, and then it looks to identify potential partners and also funding sources, if they exist, to actually help implement some of these things. We also looked across county departments and tried to figure out ways where this effort could feed into other departments' updates of existing plans and studies. For instance, for the next water sewer update, we really hope that this becomes one of those inputs into that and becomes a real useful tool for the utilities department in forecasting future demand for water and sewer service. So with that, I will pause here for questions about the future land use concept or any of the comprehensive plan elements before moving into the transportation component.
Any questions, gentlemen? All right, carry on.
What the great thing, and I think the most forward-thinking thing about this plan, and it comes from the commissioners and the county, is you're doing a land use plan and a transportation plan together. That, a lot of people don't do that. They either proceed, they're either mismatched in terms of timing, but what you're doing is really saying, here's our future for the vision, or our future for the future of Union County, and here's what we think the transportation systems would look like. So those things are talking to each other, which I think is actually really valuable and will be really helpful in planning moving forward. There are really three main types of recommendations that we're suggesting on the transportation side: roadway, hotspots, and multimodal. The biggest piece of this is, are the roadway recommendations. There are a lot of colors on this map, but the key takeaway I wanna make here is that a lot of these are either improving access along existing roads, widening shoulders in rural roads to accommodate farm-to-market traffic, and thinking about how do we improve our existing infrastructure, not build brand-new infrastructure, because we know that's costly and probably unrealistic given state funding levels. That this map is really kind of the backbone of Union County's transportation system. As you'll notice, the dark green lines, that's where your greatest population density is. That's where we're looking to make improvements to existing roadway to ensure mobility in those areas. But we also don't wanna forget the entire county. So the blue air, the blue in the eastern part of the county, that's really looking to upgrade those facilities so that they meet current standards, which they currently don't. So that could be a wide shoulder to accommodate truck traffic and just make things a little bit safer there. All of these recommendations have a cross-section assigned to it so that you can really see visually what that means in terms of what that road potentially could look like. And then, on the safety side, we did an entire analysis of where are some of the hotspots in the county, where are there high incidents of traffic accidents? And what this led to was an identification of hotspots. These are smaller projects. These are the projects where you get a little more bang for your buck, and these are the projects that are getting funded more easily at the state level. So we identified a number of different design improvements for hotspots throughout the county, and this one is currently, I think, being planned for, or I guess the, right, funded to be built. So, these are the types of projects that will receive a different set of funding from the state and are more likely to make it into that funding stream. We did look at all modes of travel, so that includes bicycle, pedestrian, and transit. I think the big takeaway here is that when you're improving roads, improve those for multiple modes. And so you can accommodate a bike on a wide shoulder, but that wide shoulder is also really beneficial for all the truck traffic moving in the county. And so, it's not just thinking about one use, it's thinking about all uses. The other piece that we wanted to talk about is transit. The recommendations for transit are very reasonable. They look at extending the existing express service to Monroe and thinking about a bus service down 16, but also looking at how do we get the population in Waxahaw and in and around Monroe to those express routes to then get to the employment centers of Charlotte. I think one of the most beneficial things out of the transportation piece are the project sheets. For every project that is identified in the transportation plan, there's a corresponding project sheet. So this is gonna be really helpful for staff when they go to prioritize projects to put into consideration for funding. The project sheets are, contain a statement of need. They contain all of the information that will help put that project a little bit further down the line in terms of prioritization into the regional transportation funding system. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions on the transportation side or any questions generally about the process or either plan.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And as was indicated, Chairman, we have two actions before you this evening. One is to adopt the transportation plan and one is to adopt the comprehensive plan.
All right. I'll move that we accept the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update. All in favor? Aye opposed, none. And I'll also move that we accept the Union County Multimodal Transportation Plan. All in favor? Aye opposed, none.
And may I request that you actually adopt both of those plans?
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt both of those plans.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye opposed, none. That'll take us to item number eight, US 74 Corridor Revitalization Plan Presentation and Adoption.
I will now ask Mr. Black to come forward.
All right.
Thank you. The US 74 plan is with a joint planning effort involving the towns of Indian Trail and Stallings, the city of Monroe, the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization, North County Department of Transportation, and of course, Union County. The purpose of that plan was to address in a comprehensive fashion land use, market opportunities, aesthetics, and mobility within the corridor. That leads me to our presenter tonight, Donald Simpson. Donald has vast experience in those areas, and I'd just like to give a little bit of his background. He's both an architect and a planner, has master's degrees from University of Pennsylvania in architect and city planning. He's an Aggie, the Texas Aggie, bachelor of architecture from Texas A&amp;M, and he has vast experience in this area. Donald was the principal in charge of the NC 73 Corridor Transportation and Land Use Plan, which involved three counties, Mecklenburg, Lincoln, and Cabarrus. Had five cities, three MPOs, three Chamber of Commerce. So you can see he has a lot of experience. Also in Union County, back in, I think it's 2003, Donald was the principal in charge of Indian Trail when they developed their comprehensive plan. They recently completed an update of that comprehensive plan, and Donald was part of that consulting team. City of Monroe recently selected a consultant team to update their comprehensive plan. Donald's also part of that. So with that introduction, I'd like to introduce Donald Simpson.
Thank you, Dick. The project for US 74 runs from basically the Union County line at Mecklenburg County all the way through Stallings, Indian Trail, and Monroe to the Monroe city limits on the southeast side of town. It's parallel to the future Monroe bypass and connector, which offers an opportunity to address a lot of the issues that currently are challenging US 74. The goal is to go from a congested, busy, confusing highway that carries both through and local traffic and is a conglomerate of various land uses, some of which are underutilized, some of which are vacant, some of which are a mess, and some of which are good. And to get to a coordinated land use and transportation corridor that works well for the businesses along the corridor and is also a more attractive asset to the three communities and the county, of course. We use some roadway typologies that were used in other corridor plans and have been adopted by the Board of Transportation, ranging from the six-lane boulevard in a lot of the places, four-lane suburban like Colony Road in Morrocroft in Charlotte. And we've introduced some rather new concepts from around the country, what's called a multiway boulevard, where local traffic is diverted from the main lanes, providing parking in front of existing businesses and new businesses, but the circulation there is separated from the through traffic and the main traffic. That's an example from California. This is one from St. Petersburg, Florida, that's done a very similar thing. Both of these carry about 40,000 cars a day, which is a little bit less than what will happen to US 74 when the bypass is built. But it will, it is, it is working very well on heavily-used congested roads there. We've used a lot of four-lane suburban boulevard types with medians, bicycle lanes, and pedestrian sidewalks, and in some cases, two-lane boulevards like Colony Road in South Charlotte. NC DOT is about to build some super street intersections at several of the roadways. We'll talk about where they are. We've also recommended an alternative to that to help connect land uses on either side of 74 to make it less of a barrier in some locations. This is a... This is a Michigan left, where traffic going, making a left turn or a right turn still has to turn right, make a U-turn around the median, and head in the opposite direction, but through traffic can go straight through. And we think this will help land uses connect on either side and the community be more cohesive across 74. There are a number of roundabouts recommended on some of the side streets, and improvements to the intersections that include pedestrian crossings and better signalization and aesthetics. To walk from one end of the corridor to the other, in Stallings, most of, well, virtually all of US 74 in Stallings will be rebuilt as part of, as part of the bypass construction. You can see the arrow here. It'll be an extension of Independence Boulevard, which will become a freeway with overpasses, then curve off, go behind Old Hickory Business Park and Indian Trail, and then transition into an arterial street at Indian Trail. They'll have two- and three-lane frontage roads with access to the adjacent properties, and both Stallings Road and the, the new McKee Road extension will cross underneath. So there will be access there. They'll provide a lot of potential for redevelopment in this area. There's also a, a very good aesthetics program that's been proposed by the Turnpike Authority that'll copy it. So this will provide good access back and forth across 74. That was at Stallings Road. In the Indian Trail, there'd be super street intersections at Indian Trail Fairview Road and at Unionville Indian Trail Road. And we've recommended the Michigan left intersections at Chestnut Lane Parkway, which is currently under construction, and at a connecting road around Plyler Road, which would, I'll talk about this a little bit more, which would connect both sides of Indian Trail and anticipated new development. Through Indian Trail, 74 itself would be a six-lane suburban boulevard with medians, bicycle trails on the side, and, and a combination bicycle pedestrian path. From Crooked Creek to Laurel Creek in Indian Trail, there'd be super street intersections at, at Faith Road, Faith Church Road, and at, my favorite road, let's see if I can get them all in there, is Unionville, Indian Trail, Sardis Church, and some others. I can't wait to see the exit sign from the turnpike for that road. And at the transition into Monroe, Laurel Creek to Wilson Avenue, the projected traffic volumes would allow this to go back to being a four-lane suburban boulevard. DOT is proposing a super street intersection. That was the one that you showed as part of the transportation plan. And then, we're also recommending that the connection, connecting roads out to the bypass be four-lane suburban, that is divided boulevards, with aesthetic treatments along there, because they're major gateways into the community from the bypass. This plan is based on Monroe's existing land use plan. It will probably change, because they're about to undertake an update for that. The section from Wilson Avenue to Williams Road, which is the area generally around Poplin Place Shopping Center and Rolling Hills Country Club, would remain a four-lane suburban boulevard. We had looked at some options here, but because of potential conflicts with the residential neighborhoods, this will remain largely as it is, with some perhaps driveway consolidations to eliminate some of the access directly onto 74. One of the most challenging parts of the whole corridor is the central part of, of Monroe from, basically from Williams Road to Stafford Street. This is the highest congestion and has a high rate of accidents. It would primarily be six-lane multiway boulevards. This is where we'd introduce the side streets for access to the existing and new businesses, and try to separate the through traffic from the local business access. The two bridges at Concord Avenue and US 601 Concord Highway are in need of replacement. It'll be rebuilt. We've recommended that they receive an aesthetic treatment, sort of something like what you see in the examples on the right. And again, those are major gateways into downtown Monroe, and they're trying to reinforce the, the perception of downtown Monroe and encourage more people to go there. That six-lane multiway boulevard would continue to, about to Walkup Avenue. And then from that point, it's primarily industrial and major institutions like Carolina's Medical Center Union, and that existing six-lane boulevard can remain. It functions pretty well as it is now, and there are very few conflicting driveways or cross streets. And that's the same case from, from Richardson Creek out to the Monroe City limit. So that's in pretty good shape. It just needs to be planned so that new development doesn't add to the conflicts with 74 traffic. One of the things that we tried to do throughout is to create parallel roads, and the purpose of this is so that people going to all the businesses, the stores, the offices, the restaurants along 74, right now primarily have to go onto 74 and then go in and out of driveways. And so you get local access traffic conflicting with through-access traffic, and it's just overloading the street. So what we, what we've proposed is a series of parallel roads that provide access from two directions, from, from what's now the backside of the businesses, but could improve that. This is the overall plan for, from Monroe's transportation plan. And if you see that little connection up at the top, that would be a realignment of Seacrest Shortcut, so that instead of coming in at an angle and, and just adding into the traffic on 74, it would connect over to East Avenue and then have a cross street. This sort of fits in with their plan for the northeast loop, which is the red line going up, sort of up, well, take my word for it. Going up around the northeast, sort of in between 74 and the new bypass, but not close enough to do much for 74 itself. So this would tie into this inner loop that they're trying to develop. This is where Seacrest Shortcut would be realigned from its existing, close off that access into the angled intersection, have a roundabout, and then a, a connecting street that would continue across over to Monroe Crossing Shopping Center, and then connect through redevelopment areas over to East Avenue. And then East Avenue connects into Southernland Avenue, which continues around and ties back into 74, down across from the Carolina's Medical Center. On the west side, from Hanover Drive, which is across from the Walmart and Lowe's Development, this is currently used as a shortcut already. We're just proposing that, that Hanover be a better connection over to Commerce with a roundabout connection there that would provide a smoother, easier connection for what people are already doing. Commerce would go behind, be improved behind Commerce Crossing. This is where it would connect back over to that realigned Seacrest Avenue. Then would also continue down around the Patton Avenue into Pedro Street, going across this, this very difficult intersection, Seacrest Shortcut, Concord Avenue, and, I forget the name of this street, Patton and Pedro. Monroe's currently doing a small area plan for this, and so they're looking at, at the feasibility of this and the refinement is part of it. To see what all of this does, what, what it, what happens is it creates a grid of parallel and crossing roads that provide opportunities for redevelopment, or new development, and all of these red areas, and reinforces access to the existing shopping centers and commercial areas. So this is, this is one of those areas that has the potential to become a regional center, mixed-use with, with retail, restaurant, office, and residential development in the center of Monroe, but with better circulation because of this grid network. In Indian Trail, there's a connection of a number of local streets with the new Chestnut Lane, again, across the Michigan left intersection, goes up through Old Hickory Business Park, connects over to Yamp's Road, which comes back across Unionville Indian Trail Road, connects to Plyler, and then goes to Matthews Indian Trail Road, which is in downtown Indian Trail. Indian Trail has already adopted this as part of the comprehensive plan that they adopted last Nov- November. And they're, they are planning a major expansion of Business Park and Regional Employment Center near the interchange from the bypass, as well as redevelopment of a lot, of a lot of the underutilized commercial properties along 74. Stallings, because it is all, 74 is all going to become part of the Monroe bypass, has an existing parallel road with Matthews Indian Trail Road, which runs behind some, some underdeveloped and lightly-developed and older properties that runs over to the Community College. And that can be upgraded to a two-lane local street. So by upgrading would just mean adding bicycle lanes and sidewalks, and some street trees and aesthetics to, to improve it for safety and some traffic capacity. On the, I guess that's the northeast side, there's a, the, the, local streets will be connected as part of the bypass construction. All of these reds, these red streets are part of the bypass construction. This is a, a potential redevelopment area between Stallings Road and, over, over to, shoot, I know all these roads. I can't think of the name of that one. Stevens Mill, Stevens Mill Road. And that, that connects over to some of the commercial area that's actually in Matthews. And this is the potential influence of that, with the, the parallel roads, again, a, a grid of, of crossing streets and a, a lot of prime redevelopment area. And I want to, I'd like to talk about that a little bit. The, the bypass is going to provide good connections across the bypass. This is Stallings Road. This location is at the intersection of what is becoming, very gradually is becoming a freeway with the upgrade of Independence Boulevard to an expressway, which will continue as a limited-access toll road through Union County. At the intersection of Interstate 485 radial highway that puts Stallings about 30 minutes from the airport, CATS is, one of these days, going to figure out what they're going to do for transit in the southeast corridor, and that will come out to this intersection. And it also is at, the blue line is, well, there it is. The blue line is the CSX Railroad, which provides access not only to Wilmington, but through the CSX net, network to the ports at Charleston and Savannah. So this is a major, major regional location. One of the things we heard in the, in the public meetings was the people said, well, you never get development on toll roads. And so I've thrown in a couple of examples. These are both from Dallas, Texas. And this is at the Dallas North Tollway, which is a radial toll road that comes out from downtown Dallas and goes up to Plano, and it probably eventually is going to go to Oklahoma and Missouri at the rate they're going. But it's a major radial toll road, and this is Interstate 635, which is the circumferential highway around Dallas. It's about 10 miles out from downtown. This is, this is a development that was actually begun before this extension of the toll roads, the Dallas Galleria. It's a development of high interest. It's about three and a half million square feet of retail, and three and, another three and a half million square feet of offices and a major hotel, in a very similar setting as Stallings. And then that's generated other office development and retail development around as well as being next to a, a very high-end neighborhood. Stallings doesn't have the market potential for that much development, but what this demonstrates is there, there is potential for using a toll road for, as a means of access to major development, major regional development. This is another one I happened to see a few weeks ago that's currently under construction. This is a toll road that's about 20 miles out from downtown Dallas. President George Bush Turnpike and US 75, which is a radial freeway that comes out from Dallas and goes up north to McKinney and other, other cities up north of Dallas. This site is also on DART's light rail line, which extends up into Plano. And this site, which was pretty much vacant land before the construction of the freeway and the light rail line, is now under construction as a major mixed-use retail office and residential development. And this picture down here in the lower right is State Farm Insurance's new corporate headquarters. They're relocating from Chicago to this location. Again, I don't know that that market potential is there in Stallings, but this does demonstrate that the combination of, of freeways and toll roads has tremendous development potential. And when you add in the opportunity for public transit, it's, it's particularly strong. Now, on a smaller scale, one of the things that we looked at was access management for improving existing roads. This is an example of the section from Morgan Mill to Walkup in Monroe. This is, this is Morgan Mill down here, and this is Walkup. And there's a lot of fast food, some repair shops, and various businesses along here. And you can see all the, the driveways that come in and out. This is a big part of the problem all along 74. This particular section has the opportunity with Perser Avenue that runs already parallel to 74. What we're suggesting is a driveway consolidation throughout the corridor. Start to close up some of those existing driveways, landscape them so that you limit the number of driveways. Connect the parking lots so that you have a continuous lane connecting from, all the way from Morgan Mill to Walkup with access to all the properties, not just one at a time. And have fewer in and, right-in and right-out access from 74. But you also use Perser Avenue as a two-way street that provides access to all of those properties as well. On the other side, the same thing. Close off some of the driveways. You connect all the parking lots so you have continuous lanes. You use that existing road for access to those properties, and then you have in-and-out traffic and use the existing crossing median, so that you start to eliminate all of those conflicts of traffic, which cause an awful lot of the congestion and the accidents and the, the problems on 74. This is an example between Hanover and Dickerson, where that multiway boulevard might be, might be provided in the gray, the gray lanes along here where you could connect, you could connect these properties, and all of these could And all of these could, these actually could be very easily connected with the multi-way boulevard so that you, you eliminate most, if not all, of the interconnecting driveways. And then you've got local access with on-street parking for all of the businesses in that section. And these, again, are the examples from California and Florida and one that's under construction in Washington. There's an existing recommended aesthetics program that uses the aesthetics of the byway, enhanced bridges, street lighting, local gateways. Indian Trail has already started installing gateways and enhanced corridors, corridor enhancements throughout with landscape, better lighting, banners, to really make this start to appear more like a local road and not a through highway. Same at intersection, at intersections. The next step, the final report is, final report is just about finished, and I've got the final edits on my desk. Indian Trail has already incorporated the recommendations from this plan into their comprehensive plan. Monroe is just beginning a land use plan and transportation plan update. They're going to use this as a basis for refining land use and transportation recommendations. Stallings, because they, they are, you know, had opposed the bypass in the past, are taking it under advisement and they're going to study it. They may, some of the new council members might, might look at it differently. But its use from this point for all three communities and the county is to use it as a basis for further land use and transportation planning, and most importantly, as a basis for pursuing funding. And we think that the priorities for funding should be in three areas where there are the highest projected future traffic volumes, which is largely Indian Trail and Central Monroe, the highest number of unsignaled side streets and driveways, which again is Indian Trail and Central Monroe, and not surprisingly, the highest crash rate areas are in those same two areas. And those should be the priorities to begin to work on. That's an overview. I hope I didn't talk too long about it, but there's a lot of detail and a lot of, a lot of stuff to cover in there. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or hear any of your comments.
Can you give us some money to help us do all that stuff?
Uh, yeah, well.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And we are asking this evening the board consider adoption of the US seventy-four revitalization plan.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the US seventy-four corridor revitalization plan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right. How good for you?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And take us to item number nine, session law twenty fourteen dash nine. Commissioner Johnson, I'll turn it over to you.
Give it to manager for.
Would you like me to make some introductory comments?
Please.
Commissioner Johnson did request that this be added to the agenda, but for the, the audiences here as well as the viewing audience, session law twenty fourteen dash nine was passed this past year by the General Assembly. Included us and two other counties, but there was a little bit of difference as to how we were treated compared to those other two counties, in which it was dictated as to how much this Board of County Commissioners had to appropriate for the Union County Public Schools for current expense, or as you all know in our nomenclature, operating expense, as well as for capital, and then put an inflationary increase for next year based upon the average daily membership in the local school administration unit based upon the first twenty days of prior year of the school year, and as well as a consumer price index. Based upon the numbers that we have seen for the twentieth day as of September twenty fourteen, it would appear that next year we would looking, be looking at a two-point-seven percent growth or about two-point-three-five million dollars in current expense funding. One of the other things that was a result of the session law, in addition to the capital expenditure, it removed a lot of the local control of the Board of County Commissioners in which in, prior to this law, you could allocate by purpose and function code. That was removed out of your purview to where we could make suggestions, but we could not monitor nor track to that. And that's just kind of an overview of what the law entailed. We do make mention here that really the fiscal impact of this action, whether you decide to repeal tonight or not, is really unknown at this point in time since we are not into the budget season yet. And with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, manager and Mr. Chair. As many of you know, in the past twenty-four months, Union County as a whole has been through some very difficult times. And I'm happy to say that I feel like our best days are ahead of us. One of those difficult, difficult times was last summer when the Board of Education in Union County went to court over funding for our public schools. While I and many others still feel like the idea of suing each other is ludicrous, it is a tool that the state legislature gave the Board of Education, and they were well within their rights to execute that ability. After weeks of trial and more money than you can begin to imagine being spent on attorney fees and staff hours on both sides, a crippling ruling was handed down that is still under appeal. Folks in Union County and in counties across the state took a keen interest in moratorium legislation, and some counties pushed for a moratorium to prevent this act of suing taxpayers for more funds. Union County opted to be a part of that legislation in an effort to stop the waste of taxpayer money on attorney fees. In addition to eliminating the ability for the Board of Education to sue for additional tax dollars for a period of time, this legislation also had a minimum level of funding attached, which eliminated the discussion of funding levels between the two boards, and therefore ignored the discussion of needs for the Board of Education as well as the affordability for the Board of County Commissioners. While I've made the comment on multiple occasions that the authority to levy taxes should rest with the board that oversees the use of those funds, either with the Board of Education or the Board of County Commissioners, this item tonight is not about that issue. That being said, I do feel that that is a discussion that should be happening between boards, state delegates, business leaders, citizens, and ultimately, changes must be made to this arrangement. After speaking with state legislators, fellow board members, and other leaders in our community, the common belief is that while the initial spirit of the moratorium was beneficial, implementation of this moratorium with the limited oversight and attached price tag simply is not in the best interest of the taxpayers of Union County, and neither the Board of County Commissioners nor the Board of Education. With this resolution, we are requesting that the state legislature repeal this moratorium as soon as possible when going back into legislative session. I feel that this will allow both the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Education to work together and begin repairing relationships with the new board members on both sides as they work to reach a level of funding that places our students in a safe environment and also gives them the tools necessary to be successful and while maintaining a tax rate that is affordable for our citizens and our businesses. While I will no longer have the privilege to serve you after November thirtieth and will, and will not be able to participate in the next, next budget cycle, I do call on my fellow board members, Commissioner Helms, Commissioner Aikmas, and Commissioner Simpson, to return our tax rate to the affordable rate of sixty-six cents since this legislation will be repealed. When the discussion for the tax rate was increased, to increase the tax rate was held, the basis for this tax increase was to pay this price tag. And with this requirement being removed, I encourage you to stay true to the items that were contained in that discussion and remove this burden from our taxpayers. I would also like to thank our state delegation, which consists of Senator Tucker, Senator Hartzell, Representatives Arp, Representative Horn, and Representative Brody, for their responsiveness to this board's request, both with this issue as well as the others since I've been on this board. While there will be some adjustments by both the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of Education to work together as new, new members are seated on both sides, I'm quite optimistic that these boards can work together and make sure that considerations are made for all parties involved. Both boards have very intelligent members, and I feel certain that they will be able to work through the next budget cycle as a team. As I started, I strongly feel that the best days are ahead for Union County, and I look forward as a private citizen to seeing these two boards work harmoniously together for the future and betterment of Union County. And therefore, I make the motion that the Board of County Commissioners pass a resolution requesting that the General Assembly repeal session law two zero one four dash nine.
Motion of the floor, in discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Helms?
Yes, sir. I agree with a lot, a lot of what Commissioner Johnson has to say. However, I think we're a little premature. This clearly is a double-edged sword. We have a meeting October thirtieth for the fourteen-member board that was identified in House Bill two ninety-two to discuss the capital needs. And I think we all agree that the schools have some very valid capital needs. I think we should delay this until after we hear the presentation, determine what's valid, and then take the appropriate steps. I know in speaking with, with our county CFO, he wasn't in favor of this, but I think in an effort to, to work with the Board of Education, I think we need to hear him first and then move forward.
Mr. Johnson?
And I, and I've had an opportunity to speak to Commissioner Helms about this, and he raised some very valid concerns. And along with that, we, or I feel that this, with this legislation, the committee that was brought up should continue to meet even after the fact, even if the legislation is repealed. I think it's great to have stakeholders from throughout the community, which is made up in this group, this working group, to stay intact even if this legislation is repealed because ultimately, the input, basically, we've got to do things different than we've done in past years. And if a collaborative effort from a group of people throughout the community can help us come together to establish, as I said, not only the dollar amount for this board, but also the need for the Board of Education, their hands are tied with this also. And so this will give them a little more flexibility to, to speak up about their needs. And I agree with you. I feel like there are some pressing needs that they have in terms of capital. So I think in requesting this repeal, it's not going to do away with the working group. I think the working group should not only meet at the end of this month, I think it should continue to meet in perpetuity because I think ultimately, input from others, not only just us and just them, but from others outside of the, these two boards and staffs would be great and beneficial for everyone.
Any other comments? Last chairman?
I had the opportunity to speak at length with our state representatives with regard to this, and I agree with Todd. I think that there was probably some unintended consequences in this effort, and I believe that, that they probably feel, as I feel, that the decisions about funding between the county and the Board of Education should be made at a local level, so.
All right. I certainly agree. I believe that's why the people appointed or elected us to make these decisions. So I'll support your motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One? All right. And that will take us to item four, or ten, which is item four J.
Yes, Commissioners, and I'm happy to answer any questions or go over what this item is, whatever is the board's pleasure.
Tell us what it is first.
Okay. When we brought to you the Human Services Building initially, probably a couple of years ago, we anticipated a, about a thirty-five million dollar price tag. At the point in time, we brought in our architects, we were able to refine those numbers, and the number, I think we told you about a year ago, is forty-two million. Thirty-five million was being cash funded. The remaining seven million was going to have to be incurred through debt. And in going through our financial audit this year, which is technically done but not quite yet accepted because of a state technicality, we have determined that we have sufficient funds and fund balance to cash fund the remaining seven million dollars. So we are bringing it forward to you as part of your consideration by taking the action of cash funding the entire project versus taking out the debt for the additional seven million would save you about five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars annually.
All right. Mr. Helms?
Chairman, yes. I, I don't, don't disagree with the philosophy to cash fund it. My concern is, at one of our last meetings with the fire chiefs, a comment was made that we had no funds to inject into EMS if necessary. I think that by delaying this until we see if we have funds that are needed in EMS, EMS, some of the equipment has been neglected. I can tell you the committees that are working for, on the EMS process have been very collaborative and clearly are taking into concern the financings of it. So we're not wanting to waste this money, but I don't want to get to the end of this committee and say we can't afford it because we're short. All I'm asking is that, do we delay this to see if we do need funds? This building is over two years away from completion, and additional funding in the years can make up any difference if necessary. We may not need a penny of it, but I don't want to get the situation and say, no, we can't do that because we don't have funds.
If I may, Mike, one just comment, Chairman. These are one-time money, one-time monies, so that is why staff has recommended this because it is for a one-time expenditure. I don't know, I have not been involved with the working group on EMS, but if there are ongoing expenditures, you would have funding for one year, and then you would have to look for additional funds in subsequent years. If we were looking at staff or, if you were looking at one-time expenditures in EMS, it was, it'd be a simple application, but if you were looking at staffing, et cetera, then those are monies that, once you spend them, they are gone, and you'd have to look at other funding sources.
All right. I'd like to hear from Jeff. Mr. Yates?
Under your current policy, the fund balance policy that's part of your budget ordinance, there are really two acceptable uses of fund balance, unassigned fund balance, defer or to take care of future liabilities, which means elimination of debt, or if we were to use it to pay down OPEB, or some of those other options, or for one-time expenses. I think Commissioner Helms has a very valid argument that the EMS committee may come back with some increased costs, but Cindy is right in that if you were to pick up operational costs, for instance, adding units, adding personnel, adding those different things, those are costs that really, truly are a part of your fund balance policy, your fund balance allocation. If you needed a bridge funding tool, there is going to be about two million dollars remaining in the unassigned fund balance after you take this action. In addition, depending upon the funding amount and so forth, there could be other action taken to make budget amendments from other areas within the government. So the way that we kind of arrived at this is this board's been working with us over the years to work through our debt portfolio and so forth, and at this time, taking on additional, what would be two-thirds bonds debt, reuse of your GO bond authority. We can take that off the books and not grow our debt portfolio, but allow us then to move forward with the Human Services Building, saving that annual cash payment that we would have, in addition, saving the interest cost, which is about three million dollars over the life of the debt. So I think there's a couple of factors that you should consider in doing this. The long-term implication, you have the funding available based on our audit, as Cindy mentioned. It's complete with the exception of the audit letter from our auditors, and that's due to, we haven't received some confirmations from the state, which we're waiting for. So the funding's available, but I think that also, as the EMS group comes back, there would be an opportunity to fund the need there with the available funds that are in that program. So I think you, I don't think they're mutually exclusive from that perspective. I think that they can both be done if we're mindful and we work through the issues related to the EMS, and in such a way in ensuring that those ongoing costs are addressed with ongoing funding versus use of one-time funding.
Thanks, Jeff. Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson?
One of the concerns...
Uh, one of the concerns that I, if you, if you've been to any of our meetings since, in the last four years, it keeps coming up fiscal sustainability. When Chairman, or Vice Chairman Simpson was the chair, one of his goals early on was to lead this board to a fiscally sustainable budget and not just in the short term, but in the long term. We have, uh, either been number one or number two for the last four years or longer in debt per capita. And what that means is we are, uh, very heavily leveraged, and we have, uh, we have to pay that debt. So be it $7,000 from unassigned fund balance or taking on the new debt, you've still got to pay the bill. The credit card bill comes due one way or the other. So the prudent thing at this point in time is to take that $7 million and let's not put anything else on the credit card. That being said, I also agree that we need to make sure that, uh, the firemen, the firewomen, the EMS, uh, safety, security, that's our number one goal. So make sure that they have the items that are needed for them. That being said also, if that's equipment, equipment has maintenance. That's an ongoing expense. And if I'm hearing you correctly, uh, Mr. Yates, that probably does not qualify as one-time expenditures according to our fund balance policy. That would be more in terms of debt or, or one-time expenditures, so to speak.
Right. Under your fund balance policy, again, you can go back to the one-time costs. So any parts of that EMS plan, as we work through it, and as the group determines what the capital outlay needs of that plan, that's an, that would be an appropriate use of this funding, because that's more one-time in nature. But those ongoing costs where there's staffing or equipment that comes with maintenance, for instance, computers and those kinds of things that have maintenance agreements and so forth, as we work through the EMS funding strategy, what we'll really have to do is figure out how we take those costs and identify the ongoing funding for those. Because if we don't do that in four, five, six months, when we get to July 1 of 2015 and start the 2016 fiscal year, we're gonna have to identify a funding mechanism to make up that difference out of the gate. So I think that, I, I think in the process, what we need to do is kind of bifurcate that, or separate out the pieces that are one-time in nature, look toward the unassigned fund balance that we would have remaining, do that, and then try to identify the ongoing sources for those pieces, um, that are ongoing in nature. So I think it's a process, and it's, and it's a kind of a tedious process of going line by line through that and kind of separating out the individual components.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Helms?
I totally agree with you, and that's one of the things we've been looking at. There is some one-time charges, and some of them are healthy. Uh, and then there are ongoing expenses, and it, it'll be broken out. Like I said, I just don't want to, you know, come back and say, you know, we don't have funding to take care of these one-time expenses that are needed to provide emergency services to our citizens, uh, in, in the vein that they deserve and they need.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, too.
Mm-hmm.
The other thing that you do consider, and this kind of spills over in our committee discussion, but, um, there is some funding available in the EMS side of the house at, um, in the EMS funds on the side with CMS Union. That's fund balance on their side of the house as well. So this isn't the only pot of money that we have available to go toward one-time costs for EMS. They have some built-up fund balance, which we called upon them this year to use as part of the funding for the equipment, which we could look to depending upon the final outcome of the agreement and the ongoing contractual agreement with CMS. So, uh, when you're looking at this, you're not limited to that 2 million. You're gonna be limited to the bigger pot, depending upon the agreements and how we work that. So just kind of keep, you know, one other thing for you to factor into that conversation is this isn't the only pot of money available to, to purchase equipment for EMS and so forth.
All right. Any other comments or questions? I'm just no far more from Missouri myself, but, uh, if I've already got some debt and I can pay for this thing with my savings account, uh, sure makes a lot of sense to me. So I'll certainly support it. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? One. And that will take us to appointments to boards and committees. What does this? And we have a list of...
Mr. Chairman, we learned this afternoon that there's something that needs to be updated.
Okay. You want to do that now, or do you want to put that on a later agenda? All right. All in favor of moving that to the November 3rd agenda item?
Aye.
Okay. That will bring us to item number 12, the county manager's comments.
Just have two very minor comments. One is I am thrilled to report that Wes Baker is doing very well and will be back to work part-time on Monday.
I'm not surprised.
I think he probably twisted his doctor's arm to get him to come back that early. And the other was, um, I didn't know if you all noticed coming through the lobby today, but the fountains that were originally housed at the Historic Courthouse have been refurbished. Uh, we have placed one in the lobby, and it's operational. Uh, it's, it's quite a testament, I think, to our, our history in this county. And the other one was also refurbished, and it will be over at the Historic Courthouse, so.
It is beautiful indeed. Commissioner Helms?
Uh, no comments. I just wish everyone would have a good evening.
All right. Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, earlier this evening, this is more just information for, uh, for citizens. We had a, a Board of Health meeting, and with that, our Health Director brought forward some information concerning the Ebola virus as well as, uh, another type of virus that's pretty prevalent, that I'm not gonna try to, to call the name of it. But I, I encourage you to visit the county website. Uh, where, there's more information, not only about the Ebola virus, but also this other virus and some of the steps, the proactive steps that we as a county are taking to make sure that you are safe and secure. And so I encourage everyone to visit that site and learn about it, and knowledge is power. So I hope you'll check that out, and I wish everyone a good evening.
Vice Chairman?
I just wanted to, again, uh, take this opportunity to welcome, uh, Mr. Liddington as our County Extension Director. And, uh, hopefully everyone knows, but Union County is very fortunate in that we have somewhere around, uh, close to $400 million in farm-level income from agriculture. We're about the third largest out of 100 counties in North Carolina in ag production. And, uh, in a state where agriculture, uh, 70-plus billion-dollar industry and pretty much dwarfs anything else. I think tourism's something like around 17 to 20 million. Uh, that being said, I think, uh, you might want to take note as we had the presentations regarding our comprehensive plan. Uh, there's still a significant portion of our county that is green and devoted to agriculture and agribusiness. Uh, but at the same time, there's that inner circle, that yellow part that is under development and, uh, and is designed to have sewer and water. Uh, over the last, uh, four years, we have approved a long-range sewer and water master plan. Uh, we just recently approved a new unified development ordinance. Tonight, we approved a comprehensive, uh, uh, land use plan for Union County. A, uh, I believe first of its kind, uh, countywide transportation plan, uh, for the county, the 74 corridor plan. And we've worked diligently to provide the infrastructure, the sewer and water to, uh, to fulfill those plans. So I just want to say that this is not haphazard but by design. We've worked long and hard, and I want to thank all the staff members and all those, uh, the consultants and those people who, who have worked to, to drive us in this direction.
Thank you, sir. And I would just like to remind everybody that, uh, November the 8th and 9th is the Monroe Air Show, and, uh, certainly going to be a, uh, spectacular presentation. And encourage you to bring your families out for a great day of entertainment. Uh, been, been fortunate to be, attend that in the past, and it is truly a remarkable sight, uh, to watch that presentation that's put on there. So I encourage all the citizens, both near and far, uh, to come out and be a part of that. So with that, I wish everyone a good evening, and I'll move that we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.